Yeah, let me know. We'll get to that.
Thanks, everybody. We already had had a study session scheduled for tonight, but we obviously have had to move some things around in the last week and a half because of, you know, the Chief of Staff dealing with burying her mom. So we've had some requests from council to be able to present your ideas on how you'd like to look at this budget. So thank you for coming tonight. And I think that the first thing we should do is we know that Councilman Brzezinski has lobbied, I don't know if lobbied is the right word, he would like us not to have to raise the sewer and refuse rates. So if that's okay with you, I think we'll let Ed, you know, have Ed have his say, have anybody else chime in. And then we do have the Public Works people here, we have Lisa, and we have the mayor, and anybody else who can help, you know, speak to that issue. I'll make a list of any other things that you would like to talk about tonight.
I'll let the other folks talk. I'll speak at the end.
Pardon me?
I'll speak at the end with the other folks.
Okay.
Bring up their ideas.
Okay, well, let's do the, but because we do have Chuck and AJ here, let's talk about any other reaction to the sewer and refuse piece.
So we need to refresh this. So how much money was the two increases gonna create, generate?
The increase in the wastewater treatment plant will be $1,452,517. And in the refuse. In the refuse, it's gonna be five, it's gonna generate $550,730. If you want to talk about what did that do to a resident, in refuse, the quarterly rate will be increased by $2.84 a quarter, or $11.36 annually. We're proposing to increase the budget in refuse from $9,45,254 to $9,595,984. But if it's okay, I'd like to start with the larger of the two budgets, the wastewater treatment plant.
What?
The wastewater treatment budget.
Can you remind me with that increase, as you said, 1 point what million?
The proposed rate increase in wastewater is $1,452,517. And just so everyone knows, also joining us today on Zoom is Basil Ronzetti, the Bureau Chief of the Wastewater Treatment Plant.
And I believe Renee is on there, too.
So with the wastewater treatment plant, we are proposing an increase of $1,452,517. We want to discuss three accounts that we feel are driving the need for this increase. Account number 4033, operating supplies, 47, heat, light, and power, and 4057 tipping fees.
How much you have in there for operating supplies?
Operating supplies, we're gonna, $1.5 million. It's an increase of $500,000. And we're prepared to discuss the reasons why I feel the increases are necessary and share the appropriate information with council to make the right decisions.
And Chuck, what page are we on for that?
We're gonna go to page 70 in the bunch of book.
I just noticed that half a million, I was wondering why we did that.
Yes, Mr. Brzezinski, we've, we've highlighted three accounts that we feel that need to be explained to, fully under, fully explain why we need the, why we're asking for this type of increase. The first account is account 4033. In 2022, the account was budgeted at $1 billion. And in 2023, the account has been increased to $1,500,000. In account 4033, we find there's three main cost drivers. And thank you, I think Victoria's put the slides up for everyone to see. Chlorine, in 2021, the cost of chlorine per ton was $500. At the end of 2022, the cost of chlorine per ton increased to $1,998. This is an increase of 298%. The cost driver behind this cost increase are market-driven. The increases are expected to continue at the current pace without a plateau. Based on these factors, it's estimated that the cost for chlorine alone will increase 150% in 2023, consistent with the market-based cost increases. We've been told by our supplier, J.C. Jones, to expect the force majeure every three months as prices continue to increase. In 2022, our projected cost for chlorine is $116,295.27. In 2023, our cost projection for chlorine is $290,738.18, an increase of $174,442.91. The second driving cost factor in the 4043 account is polymer. In 2021, the city very solicit bids for polymer, which is an essential chemical compound used in the pretreatment process. The city received bid pricing for polydium in the amount of $0.1950 per pound, which will remain constant through 2020, 2022, 2023, and 2024. So we're happy to see that in 2022, we budgeted $357,024.79, and we do not foresee a cost increase based on the cost of polymer. So that's, that's a bonus. Third cost driver in account 4033 is ferrochloride. Ferrochloride is also a very critical chemical in the pretreatment process. In 2021, the city very solicited bids for polymer. The city received bid pricings from PVS Technologies in the amount of $803 per dry time, which will remain constant from 2022 to 2024. So again, we projected $159,528 in 2022, and in 2023, we're comfortable with that amount, $159,528.22. But as narrative states, it's important to note that the cost of ferrochloride has increased by 228% since 2013. So the main increase of the request of the additional $500,000 in account 4033 is the understanding that we're gonna have to spend an additional $174,442.91 on chlorine. And the rest is, we are comfortable with the remaining amount being used and set aside for price increases due to inflation across the board. The second account, we're gonna see a significant increase in the ask, is 4047, heat, light, and power. In 2022, we budgeted $1,575,000 for heat, light, and power. We have already over that amount in 2022. In 2023, we're proposing to increase that to $2,42,616. And this is a very important slide to share, to discuss what's happening with the cost drivers in utilities, electric, water, and natural gas. We'll start with our electric. In 2022, the city of Erie is paying .059932 per kilowatt hour for electricity. In 2023, that cost has increased to 0.07499. That is a 26.41% increase. This contract was recently negotiated and council approved it in October or November. So what does this, how does this equate in budget numbers? In 2022, our electric costs were projected to be $1,015,635.99. In 2023, our electric cost projection, $1,283,926.40. That's an increase in electric of $268,000, $268,290.40. Water, now, this number needs to be adjusted because I was just made aware that we anticipated water increasing the rates by 5%. And yes, we were told it's gonna be 7%. And we didn't have the extra two minutes to adjust the calculation. So this is gonna be slightly low. But the 2022 cost projection for water, we're gonna spend approximately $358,018.48. At a 5% increase, which we now know is not the correct increase, it's gonna be higher, somewhere between 7 and 8%, our cost projection went to $375,919.41.
It's 7, it was approved at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. So the difference at 5% was $17,900. So that number needs to be adjusted accordingly. So this number on this is a little bit low. Lastly, in our heat, light, and power, one of the, one of the biggest components is the natural gas use. In 2022 cost projections, we're anticipating spending $512,617.3. We're anticipating a 39.92% increase in natural gas. The 2023 cost projections have increased to $717,253.74. That's an increase in natural gas of $204,636.72, making a combined increase in heat, power, and light of $490,828.4.
Sure wasn't 3 cents. I'm teasing you, Julie. Good job.
I might not have rounded that one up right. And the last thing that you're gonna see, the biggest difference, and we highlighted the four things, like I said, 4033, 4047, and 4057, where we think council would look at those numbers and ask for some kind of explanation for the increases. 4057 is tipping fees. So in 2021, the city of Erie sent out a request for proposal for the cost of tipping fees associated with disposing of incinerated ash, sludge, grit, screenings, et cetera. The bids resulted in the following increases for both incinerated ash, sludge, grit, and screenings. In 2022, incinerated ash was $46 per ton. In 2023, that price is gonna increase to $48.50. The cost for sludge, grit, and screenings in 2022, $46 per ton. And in 2023, that's gonna increase to $48.50. Just alone in the tipping fees, we anticipate an additional $15,206.33 increase in our tipping. And we also have price projections going out into 2024, which continue the upward trend. For the ash, it's gonna go from $48.50 to $51.50 in year 2024. And for the sludge, grit, screenings, it's gonna increase from $48.50 to $51.50 per ton. And that's in 2024. And I think what's important is when we talk about enterprise funds, is we need to look at them as a utility, because that's typically what they are. They're a true utility, they're no different from National Fuel Gas or Pennalec. The difference is, how does, how does the rate get set? For PUC-regulated companies, annually, the company goes to the PUC and they, and they present a report to the PUC, explains their previous year's expenses, costs, et cetera, and then presents them with a plan on what they think the costs are gonna be going forward. This is kind of the approach we're trying to take with you. The PUC allows for the companies not only to pay their expenses, but also build up a reserve for capital expenses and unforeseen circumstances. So with that being said, this is why the request to increase the budget in the wastewater treatment plant of $1,452,517 is being requested. Are there any questions?
We transferring money out of the, I thought I saw, what, 500 grand?
Yes, there is a $500,000 transfer out of the wastewater treatment fund this year. You will see that there is no transfer in the refuse fund. That transfer has been eliminated. And I will let AJ talk about the refuse increase, and that's significantly lower.
And I do think the goal is to stop doing that transfer, though, out of the sewer, correct? Am I correct that?
That is correct. In my opinion, when I say the enterprise fund should operate like a utility, we should have money in that fund to make all our purchases, our capital improvement purchases, our truck equipment, pay our raises. Last time we purchased a garbage compactor, that money was paid for out of the general fund, capital improvement plan, because there was no money in the, in the refuge fund to make that purchase.
Are you able to tell me what salaries were added, or what the difference is between 2022 and 2023? It's 4011 on page 70.
I see that it did jump, but it looks like it was around that point in previous years, so.
Yes, and as far as full-time employees, in 2022, we had 69 and a half full-time employees. In 2023, that number has dropped to 68.50. One employee was transferred out of this, this account and into the.
Communications.
Stormwater, thank you. So to answer your question on the account.
I was just seeing the difference between the years. What was the difference?
Oh, yeah, if you look, you'll see a slight decrease in 4011, this salary's from $4,313,529. That number's being reduced to $4,256,085, and that's based on the one employee being transferred out of this fund into the stormwater fund.
Now, the majority of the employees in this fund are Teamsters, and we haven't finished the negotiations yet, so there is an amount in the general government contingency fund in case of increases.
Yeah, in case.
We're using the same wages as '22.
In case council's not aware, we're currently in negotiations with the Teamsters Union. Their contract expires December 31st of this year.
Thanks for the information. I think there's a, is there a meeting Thursday on that? Is that the, like, an all-day meeting?
We have an all-day negotiating meeting scheduled for Thursday. Hopefully, we are able to settle the contract on Thursday. The second account that we've asked for an increase, also the enterprise fund, we're asking for an increase of $550,730 in the refuse fund. That would take, in 2022, the fund was budgeted for $9,45,254. We're asking that fund be increased to $9,595,984. Again, this is for the average customer, $2.84 quarterly increase. And annually, it comes out to $11.36. And I've asked AJ to present, to create a presentation very similar to what I just did. So AJ, please take over.
Yep, absolutely. So much, much like the wastewater treatment plant budget, there's core cost drivers in the Bureau of Refuge and Recycling that have resulted to where we're at today. So for example, and we went over a lot of this information when we presented Public Works' portion of the budget earlier in November. Obviously, labor, and I'd like to highlight on page 77, seasonal labor on 4013. So in 21, year 2021 and 2022, the, we had to, the Bureau of Refuge, we had to increase the part-time labor rate from $8 and $10 an hour to $15 an hour. And this was made in an attempt to remain competitive in the labor market. Obviously, the COVID pandemic changed, changed the labor dynamic across, across the country. So Public Works, in the city of Erie, we had to adapt to this national trend. And we saw that this increase in part-time labor needs to become standard, $15 an hour is the minimum that we can expect people to sign up to work in the Bureau of Refuge. And there are benefits to working part-time in the Bureau of Refuge, provides training opportunities and a potential, it's essentially a feeder system potentially for employees to move in through part-time to full-time. Though, as I mentioned, 4013, the seasonal wages, so in 2022, we're projecting that we're gonna spend $884,48, 48, I'm sorry, $884,48.73. And in 2023, our projection is $900,000. And that's just, we need to be able to continually staff the level that we need in order to pick up the refuse and recycling that we have out. And we find that.
Do we know what the impact has been with this glass collection at Glenwood Park and at West Saffron?
We do have a report that we can make available to you, but recently it was announced.
Much of the savings for us?
Recently, it was announced that Prism Glass has been taken over by Pro Waste. And there's gonna be some changes to the operation and the collection. So I will, I can provide you the information that was given to us, because every year we fill out annual recycling grant with the state, and we have to identify the recycling. It'd be very easy to see what we see saved in tipping fees. I'd be happy to get that for you. And one thing that AJ failed to mention, in 2022, council approved for seasonal wages The determination that we had to raise rates or remain competitive was made after the budget was passed. So we did not take that into account, and that's why we are overspent on this year's budget on seasonal wages.
And then the next account that we had spoke to, and everyone's familiar, because they fill their vehicles up with gas pumps, as well as the cost of fuel and diesel prices have, has. and diesel prices have, has continually gone up throughout the year. We have seen them plateau throughout the end of 2022. But fuel expenses are allocated in budget line forty thirty-three. And the Bureau of Refuge uses anywhere between sixty-five thousand to seventy thousand gallons of fuel a year. And just a couple of numbers that we think are kind of ironic to show the fluctuation of fuel costs and where it's gone and where it's been. And in COVID pandemic, in the height of pandemic, in 2022, a gallon of unleaded gas was forty cents a gallon, and a gallon of diesel was a dollar and three cents. In 2022, we're paying three dollars and eight cents a gallon for unleaded gas and three dollars and eighty-six cents a gallon for diesel. And we project that potentially two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this forty thirty-three are going to go to fuel and fluids. And we're projecting that we're going to spend in this account, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And in 2023, we're asking for two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we believe that based off of different energy websites and studies that we've reviewed through the Department of Energy, that fuel prices will remain at the level, current level, and we won't see a large fluctuation in fuel pricing than we're at current levels now. So that's why that account, we believe that's a lean budgetary number for forty thirty-three, which is primarily the cost of fuel.
Well, I think that the way the fuel is going up and down constantly, it's very difficult for you to be on the money. And I would suggest that you project higher than what you're doing right now, because it's going to wind up being transferred somewhere down the line. If, you know, if it goes sky high, we got to keep our trucks moving. We've got to keep our vehicles moving. So I think you ought to think that over again.
And we can echo that statement, and Lisa has the numbers for the general fund's fuel cost, but that budget line item has far exceeded what we had budgetarily planned. And as you mentioned, Councilman Lotterspin, there's.
You are applying for a grant, though, right? But we're on E V, so. And you think that there's a good chance we'll get that. But would that impact the fuel cost for 2023 right now? Or is it still, you can't?
Probably 2024.
Okay.
If we're successful in getting a grant from the DEP to convert a portion of our refuse fleet from diesel to zero emission of natural gas, we feel we're very well positioned to be awarded this grant. It just was announced. We had talked about it in November. The DEP approached the City of Erie prior to announcing the grant, because they felt that we were positioned so well to be successful. Some of the components that give you additional consideration, number one being in Act forty-seven, which we are, we're in the early intervention program, and also having a percentage of community in the economic justice. So we feel very confident that we're going to be successful. And the grant application is due in January. We've already had meetings with Volvo and Matt Truck, and we're in the process of working on the grant with Abby Yellskinner.
So with the, obviously, we've seen gas prices, you know, go up, down, up, down. So is there any, do we have capacity to buy more when it's down? And then ride out, you know, when it goes up?
We attempted to take advantage of lower pricing, but the cog pricing is very specific on, you can't buy future prices. So you can't, you can only store as much gasoline or diesel as we can at our site, in our storage tanks, underground storage tanks. And we can't write a check for additional fuel that we haven't been brought onsite. Onsite. So to answer your question, no, we have looked at that, and we cannot do that.
But Mr. Keys, we did in the Bureau of Streets anticipate salt prices rising in 2023, and that did occur. But we made sure we fulfilled our commitment at the 2022 level at the lower price, because we had the ability to purchase additional salt at a lower price.
Okay, and so just because we don't know what fuel prices are going to do, it might be something, look at additional tank or something. Might be cost-effective, cost itself out in the long run if we have more storage and we get a dip and we can, you know, get more fuel.
Right. Currently, we have two underground storage tanks at the Bureau, at the Public Works complex. Both of them have ten thousand gallon capacities, one for unleaded gas and one for diesel. And we have heard your request to look into electric vehicles. And the last few requests for purchases have came down with electric option, price hikes.
We tried to have a comparable spec on each vehicle. What we were finding is that electric vehicles are being developed more along the line for industry. And even in speaking with our Chevrolet dealer, that in 2023, 2024, they expect to have more dynamic vehicles that come out that are not your small, compact-sized electric vehicle, electric truck, electric SUV style. That would be used more in a utility-type setting that we operate in, so.
Would we be able to grant money to set up the infrastructure to keep those things charged?
Yes, when we were talking about the possibility of the conversion for the, from the diesel trucks to the zero emission electric vehicles in the heavy-duty fleet for refuse, that's ninety to a hundred percent funding with maybe either a ten percent or a zero percent match. And not only would that include the purchase of the vehicles, but all the necessary infrastructure upgrades, the charging station, potential changes to municipal garage, so our employees can work on those.
Thank you, Chuck.
Will those five new trucks, if the grant happens, would they have the mechanized arm aspect of them?
No, they will not.
Good in the city. That will be, you put them by the curb.
If you like, you know, if you enjoyed your time with the garbage people, refuse people, you know.
We call them garbage people. It sounds appropriate.
Chuck, if you'd like.
Sanitary engineers.
AJ's never worked up there, so I'm going to sign him up there for a week sometime in January. So if you'd like to have the experience, I can set it up for you.
Together, yeah.
You and AJ.
I think a next key component of the refuse and recycling budget to highlight is the fleet. As you can see in line forty seventy-eight, machinery and equipment. And as Chuck had mentioned earlier, is that we purchased a refuse truck, but it was using general fund capital expenditure money. And this year, in forty seventy-eight, we would like to invest five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the fleet, and that would mean purchasing two new garbage trucks that would help lower the overall age of our fleet, which when in theory would hopefully help lower the costs of maintaining the fleet. But as everybody else, and you've heard multiple and multiple times, the municipal governments are not exempt from the fact that costs are going up. Maintenance is going up. Costs to maintain heavy-duty trucks that go out on a daily basis and pack tons, thousands of tons of garbage is continually increasing. And you can see those in forty thirty-five and in forty fifty-six, we're asking for an increase. Forty thirty-five is actually holding the line, and forty fifty-six is going up roughly fifty thousand dollars in order to hopefully defray inflation costs that we're experiencing that are really out of our control. We work aggressively to inventory properly. If we can buy two transmissions at once and save two thousand dollars, we do that. We try to stock, we try to stock hydraulic cylinders, lines, fuel and fluids. But we only have so much space. And so we're not removed from the stresses of inflation and the cost of doing business essentially increasing over this past year. So we really believe that that needs to be considered when discussing the need for a refuse fee increase.
And I hate to put AJ on the spot, but I'm not sure that all the councilmen and women are aware that we have our own parts store. We have an NAPA in our Public Works complex. And AJ, could you please explain some of the benefits to that as far as the cost of stocking parts?
Yes, absolutely. So prior to being Assistant Director of Public Works, I was a bureau chief at the Municipal Garage in charge of all the maintenance of all of our equipment and vehicles. We maintain over seven hundred vehicles and equipment in the City of Erie. And we also have multiple, multiple different clients that we work on that raise money for the general fund. And one of the advantageous parts of the operation at the Municipal Garage is our NAPA store. So essentially, we have a NAPA store within the Municipal Garage. So the city is able to shift the risk of stocking. And if we had a million dollars of inventory, the city does not need to write a check initially to have a million dollars' worth of inventory. That a million dollars' worth of inventory is essentially only spent on as a needed basis. So it's as lean as you could, as lean as you could example is going to an auto parts store and buying a wiper for your car. We do the same thing. We don't buy a hundred wipers, and we don't, they don't sit on the shelf for years. We only buy them as we need them. And so we're able to maintain a lean fleet operation in that sense. Is that, and if we do find where we can buy two transmissions or sixty tires and have them sit in stock and get a good deal, double, we get the good deal, but then we also don't need to pay for it all right upfront. We only purchase it as we put the four tires on the car or replace the engine in the car. So having the NAPA store is a very big cost benefit to the city. Plus, the parts manager at NAPA is not paid for, is not a city employee. It's paid for through the contract that we have with the NAPA store.
You see, we're talking about the wines in NAPA, the reds and the whites.
Two different types of NAPA.
Have people been to that store? It's like a NAPA employee that's sitting at the desk, and like, it's not a city employee, it's a NAPA employee.
His name is Rich Bailey, and he's been with us for about, I believe, six years now. And he's worked extremely hard. And, you know, when there's a snowstorm, Rich is there, NAPA's there with us, working. If we have a bell housing in a truck, which is essentially the guts of the truck go break in the middle of a storm, he's on, working on Saturdays or Sundays, trying to locate parts. And so, and again, we don't expend any money until we actually, the part leaves the counter, the part leaves the store. So we could have a million dollars' worth of inventory, which I believe the value is over a million dollars' worth of inventory in the store that we're not financially responsible for until we actually use.
Which is covered by NAPA upfront.
Correct.
I had a lot of fun on that part of the field trip, and you were particularly passionate about that project. So if anyone wants to go on a field trip with AJ, I'm sure he'll volunteer to take you up there and introduce you to Mr. Bailey.
I've looked at thousands of line items of inventory, and that was one of my passion projects when we were at the garage. Because when, I mean, when we had, there was parts in there from the nineteen eighties still that, you know, are obsolete, and we've had to find proactive ways to. Try and get, yeah, we've tried to trade them in, we've tried to be creative. So there was Harley-Davidson parts from nineteen seventies that we've actually traded in for Harley-Davidson parts for twenty twenty Electroglyds, which we have now, which we operate in our fleet. So, and we're always looking, we're always looking to try and leverage the fact that we have NAPA's buying and purchasing power to help. And I really do believe it's an extreme cost benefit to the city. And you're right, I am passionate about it, because that was a big project that we undertook. And that was a whole Public Works initiative in order to utilize that purchasing power much more effectively.
And could you also talk about the work that you do for other municipalities? Because that, you are charging more, but you're also.
Yeah, we have many inter-municipality agreements. AJ, we do the work for the Erie Parking Authority, Erie County Convention Center, Erie County Sheriff's Department, Westlueville Borough.
Yep, that was a new account that we worked. And we've been actively trying to get more accounts. We're just, we're very limited on the accounts that we can bring on based off their municipal status. We work on all Erie County Sheriff's vehicles, Erie County Detective's vehicles. We provide fleet operation services and repair and maintenances for the Bureau of Refuge, Bureau of Sewers. We provide for the Parking Authority, the Housing Authority, Lake City Police, we've done outfits for Lake City Police. We do radio installs for the Erie Water Authority. And I want to highlight on page seventeen, that work, although it doesn't seem a lot, three, six, seven, three, on page seventeen of your budget, the Municipal Garage reimbursement, and this is another one that we're very proud of, is that we're actually budgeting over a million dollars in 2023 of what the Municipal Garage, the reimbursement that is going to provide the general fund. So a million, one point one, one point three-three million dollars is going to be brought in by the work that has been, that is done by the Municipal Garage mechanics, radio technicians, welders, auto body technician, reimbursed into the general fund.
A large portion of that is work done on the enterprise funds.
Yes.
Work done for the Bureau of Refuge, work done for wastewater treatment and sewer collection. Every year, we go out and we compare what we charge the enterprise funds with what private, what private companies in the private sector are charging. So if, I think five-star may be a hundred and ten dollars an hour for a heavy-duty truck or a hundred and fifty. So we're not at a hundred and fifty-dollar rate, but we're certainly over a hundred dollars. So we want to be competitive and fair and equitable and bring in, generate as much revenue that we can. And not only with municipal services like Municipal Garage, recently, we've assisted Westlueville Bureau on a couple of traffic signal issues that they had. And we send our employees out there, and we bill them accordingly. So we're continuing to develop relationships with other municipalities and effort to form new relationships and generate additional income and revenue.
On the revenue question regarding our sewer, our sewer, the city sewer charges are due to go up two million dollars on this budget. Suburb looks like it's going down about half a million. Any particular reason why we're seeing a reduction in suburban sewer charges?
Basil, could you answer that, please?
Well, what you have is, you have the suburban communities who pay their fair share of flow set to the treatment facility. So we can look at it like a sixty-forty split. The city residents or the City of Erie would contribute sixty percent of the flow to the plant, the tributaries forty. The tributaries would pay their pro-rata share of certain line items. As they go up, their costs go up. So that's probably why you're seeing the difference there, Chuck.
Never mind. Did that, yeah, sorry, sorry.
And one component.
So when we raise rates, when we raise rates in the city, it is in a direct correlation to rates being raised out of the township. They will pay their fair share of costs related to transportation, treatment of their sewage to the facility.
So are we seeing a reduction in usage in the suburbs, then?
I believe, and I'll have to look in my spreadsheet to make sure, but the flows decreased, and the river and flows decreased this year.
Yeah, some surrounding communities have been very aggressive in INI, which is infiltration. So where groundwater can get into the system and create additional charges, they've been very aggressive going out, surfacing their pipes and doing necessary repairs in their infrastructure to keep costs down as low as possible. And that ultimately affects what we receive in revenue, because it's reducing the flows coming into our plant.
That INI stuff you're talking about, can we do more of that? What is that?
We certainly would like to, and we're certainly planning on it with the stormwater fee.
So Basil's going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's inflow and infiltration. So you have an aging collection system, you're going to have groundwater getting in that's, you know, eventually making its way to the plant. So the tributaries are metered at certain sections where they connect to our collection system. If their systems are sealed tighter than ours, let's just say for basic purposes of conversation, they're going to have less INI than the city would. So as maybe significant rain events or melts or frost at the end of the year, as this makes its way into the collection system, you'll see more flow coming into the plant. But you won't see more flow coming from the tributaries where they're metered into the collection system. So if we. So if we are more aggressive at tackling INI within our collection system, our infrastructure, we're going to see a reduction in plant flow, uh, which obviously will correlate in, in, into a more equal share of, um, you know, flow proportionally distributed between the city of Erie and the tributaries.
So, so with that being said, I mean, with what's going on with the stormwater management fees and, and the investment that the city's putting in there, it sounds as if we will be able to reduce some of that inflow cost in the next couple of years. Is that something we should anticipate when considering how this rate increase, you know, what we should expect in the next couple of years?
Well, we should anticipate it eventually, but I think the first couple of years we were focusing on making sure that we need our MS4 requirements and our pollution reduction, um, eliminates when the DEP.
Okay.
And I do think the PFM report actually did say that down the road, there could be cost savings because of the stormwater fee. I think I just flipped through that the other day, so, um, but that was a good question from Chuck, a good answer from Chuck. Lots of Chucks here.
So. So do we have plans ourselves to more aggressively go after capturing, uh, the stormwater so less sediment or less, uh, things end up at the plant or in the lake, um, so.
Yeah, well, certainly right now we're, we're reactive. Um, we don't have funding available to be proactive. That's why the stormwater fee is so important. And as we continue to improve our infrastructure, we expect to eliminate more and more of that stormwater from entering our plant and thus reducing costs. But it's, it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be something that happens overnight. It's going to be something that's going to be achieved over many, many years with, with the commitment and financial support of City Council.
Okay, um, in the interest of Mother Earth and, uh, our lake, you know, I think that it might be prudent to look for grants or ways to put, uh, funding on the front end of, of, you know, the pollution reduction parts of, you know, the stormwater going into the wastewater.
Um, we've recently applied for funding through Penn Vest. Penn Vest is the organization that's going to distribute the bipartisan infrastructure money. And, um, we expect to hear about a funding offer in January for several stream bank restoration projects. In addition to that, some of the projects we've applied for have already had ARP dollars allocated. Or they were the original 10 projects that City Council allocated the $10 million for. Um, we're very optimistic from speaking to members or, um, individuals from Penn Vest that the funding offer could be significantly, um, 70 or 80 or 90% grant component as opposed to spending all just ARP money on these projects. And there are stormwater projects that we have identified for, for relining. And there's some stream bank restoration projects like you're referring to that we're required to do as part of our MS4 permit and our pollution reduction plan through the DEP.
And we're already ahead of the game is because we've received two grants from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of $200,000, one for Garrison Run and one for Cemetery Run. So now our goal is to take that money, leverage with Penn Vest, leverage with ARP, try to expand and be able to, you know, restore as much stream bank as possible to reduce that sediment that, that is discharged into the lake.
And on the next council agenda, you're going to see a request, um, authorizing us to again, apply for some additional funding. The one is the PA Small Water Grant. Do you remember the name of the other one?
The H2O Grant. H2O Grant.
And those are also going to be used for potential leveraging, true leveraging, looking for different sources of money to fund the project as opposed to using 100% ARP or 100% stormwater fund.
And those are high value type, worth $20 million potential awards that are available through the grant, so.
Well, I'm in favor of anything we can do to, you know, use our freshwater lake as an asset in the future. Wars will be fought for freshwater and the fact that we have a large body of water as our bordering, um, of the city. I think we need to do more to clean it and preserve it because people are going to come to the city of Erie because we are literally the city on the lake. So I think that anything that you guys need help with or letters of recommendation, just let us know because we definitely want to get as much grant money as possible to, you know, be as green as possible.
Thank you. The DE, thank you. The DEPs identified certain bodies of area, certain bodies of water that run through the city of Erie. And our, our PRP requirement is to reduce the sediment, sedimentation by 10% over the next five years in this permit cycle. And then once we go forward, we expect that they're going to become more and more stringent. So it's not going to be a one-time stream bank restoration project or a one-time, a one-time fix. It's going to be something that we're going to continually have to address to, to make the waters potentially cleaner.
Yes. So, um, I think we talked about this before that, you know, that we, uh, have gotten some help for our west side outlets. And we're talking about, you know, you're saying you had projects that were in the works for the east side, um, runoff streams. And so, uh, just, uh, just want to put a footnote in there that, you know, uh, it all ends up in the lake, but, but anyways, we, you know, uh, you know, uh, get the process going completely across the city and, you know, and, and everyone benefits.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. Right now, we currently, um, for our PRP, we're looking at Cemetery Run, which runs across, runs along Cranch by Lakeside Cemetery. We're also looking at, at McDaniel, which, which runs behind.
The Franklin Terrace.
Franklin Terrace. We're looking at several projects there. We have a $350,000 EPA grant to install two litter traps there. We're also looking at stream bank restorations there. Garrison Run are also, Garrison Run runs behind Frontier. And we've also have funding in place or we've applied for funding for stream bank restorations on that stream as well.
That's Frontier Lumber, not Frontier Park.
I'm sorry, Frontier Lumber. And even though, even though we're not, we're not going to receive any, any credit as far as PRP, uh, we have a 300, we have, um, funding from three different sources to do a stream bank restoration in McClellan Park that's valued at approximately $300,000. This particular stream isn't impaired. Um, we're not going to get any credit as far as our PRP, but we're definitely doing the right thing for the environment and the community.
So that one goes into 5 mile, was it?
I, I, I think this is the one that comes behind the Franklin Terrace at some point. You know, there's so many streams that go, there's only daylight in a couple places in the city.
Ends up on Water Street and goes in the five, I think three mile or five mile.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. This one, no, this one, yeah, this one starts at, uh, behind, at McClellan, like 3300 block of McClellan. And it outfalls at Shetouqua Park. But it's very difficult because most of these streams are, are piped and they're only daylighted in certain areas throughout the city. So they're hard to track unless you're looking at a map.
I think I'm probably jumping ahead here and we don't have to go deeply into this. But, you know, I went to that one, the Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference where they had, uh, I went to a session on, uh, the use of GPS systems, um, where a municipality was able to show all those different things. And I know that we're investing in GPS. We, we've talked about field trips. So maybe we don't want to go out and, and look at, you know, Cemetery, although McDaniel, I mean, it's easy to see when you're, you know, going out, East Lake Road, but maybe eventually we'll be able to see those things too. Or we could do a field trip too when it's not blizzarding out or something, just so we know the runs that we're talking about. I think it's, I think it's important. And as you said, there aren't that many places where they are visible above ground because they're, um, tubed or whatever, so.
I would, I'd recommend, and I don't know who would be interested, but the first time I went through the Mill Creek Tube from 29th Street, uh, and daylighted it at the wastewater treatment plant, I think that's 24 foot high. And you can walk it or you can drive an SUV down it. Fortunately, the fire department came and I was able to, I walked down and I got, I rode out. But, uh, any, anytime you get an opportunity to see what's underneath the city, and I, I'm learning every day. The first time with, uh, behind Frontier Lumber, I was, I was shocked and awed about the size of that pipe, the 96 inch pipe that failed was put in in 1915, 1917, 1913. And, uh, yeah, definitely sounds like a good idea as long as the weather's nice.
And just to echo what you said, had said about GPS, we are GPS, GIS route optimization. That's all something that we're working on. Uh, we, we've invested in geolocators to help spot specific locations of our assets throughout the city. GPS, we've had GPS in our, in our garbage trucks for years. We follow, we follow routes, we've checked efficiencies, driving, fuel optimization. We're utilizing route optimization in our large item pickup truck. Uh, essentially just what UPS or FedEx does, we enter in the addresses and it tells our, our driver the best, our best route to take. We're currently waiting on a grant that we submitted with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania stamp process, the early intervention process where we are looking to digitize our existing sewer infrastructure maps. And then we're hoping to phase that, phase one, two, three, four, as many maps as we can get someone to help us fund to digitize, to add on to our GIS system. That's our goal. And including in that is also the ask for technology to help. So tablets, smartphones, geolocators for our field supervisors or superintendents that do the active work or the pahole trucks or sewer manhole, uh, crew, crew trucks that go out and do the work and can track the work on a, on a tablet, which would increase efficiencies, accuracies, uh, the whole, the whole litany of just increased benefits and we're, and we're working on it. And we find the process is slower than we.
Yeah, slower than we wish, but AJ's absolutely correct. Um, the way that we're going to be able to maintain costs and keep costs low, uh, moving forward is to find efficient operational efficiencies. And we're going to find this with all the new technology available. Up until two or three years ago, our field supervisors were showing up on a job site with a paper map. So everyone else is showing up there with a tablet, pulling it up. Uh, we would get a call about a broken sewer pipe at 300 block Seminole. Our field supervisor would have to leave wherever he was at, come back to City Hall, go upstairs on the fifth floor, make a copy of the map and then drive out to, to Seminole. And it's embarrassing and we're making great strides. And we're going to see tremendous savings and operational efficiencies once we have the ability to put this technology in place.
I wanted to kind of back up a couple of conversations previous. When you were talking about the, um, entry rate for being a refuse worker. And I had just read a really interesting story about a, I think it's a pilot program in Milwaukee, um, where they were using, uh, refuse jobs to help people obtain their CDLs. Um, including, uh, these were people who were formerly incarcerated, who had lost their, um, you know, helping them restore their licenses. And I don't know if, I don't know what's going on with reentry right now. I mean, it's a county program, but it just occurred to me that that was a pretty, kind of an innovative idea. And you had mentioned that the, those, those jobs can, you know, the part-time jobs can lead to full-time. And you mentioned CDL and I know that there is a shortage of CDL drivers.
Historically, um, we would offer training to our part-time employees, anyone who is interested in getting a CDL license. Uh, we provide in-house training, uh, the support. We, we allow them to use the equipment once they're able to test. Um, and there's been some, recently there's been some changes in the CDL process. But we're, we're in the process of becoming a training location where we have the ability to provide training to our employees so they have an opportunity to advancement, not only at the city of Erie, but by getting a CDL license.
One question. Uh, other than the two persons for, that are going to be paid for by the, uh, stormwater fee and possibly the, uh, part-time employees, uh, are there any other additional employees that are budgeted in 2023?
Um, not in the enterprise funds or in the Department of Public Works, no.
How many hours a week do the part-time employees generally?
Uh, we have part-time workers in refuse that can vary anywhere from 24 to 38, depending on how often they're available. Um, we, we track these employees. The better employees are offered more, more hours, more opportunities to work. Um, we also have seasonal help in the Bureau of Parks, the Bureau of Streets. Those employees work 40 hours a week from April through October. And in parks, they're extended through December. So they're eligible for 40 hours per week and, uh, we're always looking for qualified applicants.
Do they get workers comp or not comp, but do we pay them? No unemployment? You guys did a great job. I see you guys do a great job, but I have to be the devil's advocate. Where could you cut some money out of there for us?
Out of which account?
That's what I'm asking you. Just making a point for everybody.
Yeah, it's, I'll be completely honest with you. It's a very lean budget with very few, very few asks. And we felt it was important to come down and be transparent. And where there are increases or we did ask for increases, um, that's why we're making ourselves available to provide any additional, answering questions.
That's why I prefaced that, Chuck.
Okay.
That's why I prefaced it, just make a point for the General Assembly.
So we're all aware of that everything's costing more and we see that, you know, that primarily all you did was shift the budget for, you know, the additional costs mostly. But, uh, the question is, you know, uh, as you start leveraging, uh, funds that you already have, there is $10 million, you know, in ARP funding. And if we, if you are successful at garnering some of these other, uh, grants and funding streams, uh, where the money is, is in revenue replacement. As if we, as we let out the money, you know what I mean? And, and then we can backfill the, uh, the, the, the general fund. I think that's really the only place where there's money right now is in revenue replacement. And, you know, you guys seem to, uh, have a handle on what you're doing and how it's working. And so, but we wanted to be conscious of any place where, you know, we get money that, you know, we use it so that we can, you know, that it, uh, so that, uh, if there's extra money there, that it goes back.
Right. We appreciate the fact the council allocated us, I think, 10, $10 million for ARP funds. And that was just for eight projects that we identified as immediate needs. Um, although that 10 million is going to go far, there's probably hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure repair being needed. And we're going to continue to find, um, look for opportunities to get for grant funding and leverage this funding for the betterment of the community.
And we will have next Tuesday, uh, it's the 13th, correct? Uh, Jackie Spry will be talking to council at our study session then. Um, that's strictly devoted to ARP, you know, what's gone out, what's, what's been spent. Um, Jackie promises a very thorough update for council on ARP. Was there anything else on refuse though that we have to talk about? Was, um, did we talk about tipping fees for regular refuse versus the cinder and the ash at the wastewater treatment plant?
We did, we did speak about that. Um, we have, this is our last year on our refuse, refuse contract. Um, so next year we'll be going out to bid for tipping fees for household refuse. And our recycling contract is good through 2024. So we will not be going out to bid for refuse until, um, end of 2024 for the March of 2025. So those prices have already been established.
A, a little financial background too on, on the recycling costs. So we had talked about the increasing cost of recycling and tipping fees. 2019 was $40 per ton for recycling. 2021, $125 per ton and 2022, $131 per ton. So the increasing costs of go, of recycling continue, continue to go up.
That's why I asked that question about the glass. That's a heavy part.
But it's a heaviest component in recycling, uh, well, when it was in the recycling industry. Yeah, so we're currently trying to negotiate a fair agreement with ProWaste that protects the city and provides what we feel is an appropriate rate.
And Lisa, did you want to speak to, um, this particular topic or others? I know you had done some updated numbers on how our, uh, rates compare to other municipalities? Or is that something the council? I think the one we had to update was Mill Creek because that was, we know that their rates are, are going up and will continue to go up for refuse pickup. And I think Chuck. And I think Chuck, you had mentioned, not to do like just a sales job, but we do provide more services in the City of Erie than what you get elsewhere, I believe.
We do provide some additional services that Mill Creek Township doesn't provide. Nine month composting, nine months out of the year, compost collection, free composts, recycling. Um, we have free tire and electronics recycling events. So we do offer some services that other communities around us do not. And I think as part of this package, I think last year, or it was in 2021 when we were doing the budgets. And we had, we had the same conversation where we were asking for a slight increase in, in the rates. And I'm, I personally believe that it's better to do a two, a one or two or three percent increase annually and announce it three or four years in advance. And then the, to, to skip those, um, annual rate increases and come back at a nine or 10%. I, I understand how difficult that is as a council to try to pass that.
Spend less money.
Or spend, yeah, or spend less money. So on the, on the last page here, and I don't know if Victoria can bring it up. You know, we did have, I'll, I'll grab that list, thank you. Um, we did have some things if council wasn't.
Rock, you can get it.
If council wasn't, didn't have the appetite to potentially raise the rates, $2.86, you know, what do we do? How do we continue to provide the services? I did put a few examples of some of the things that you could possibly consider cutting instead of, instead of like the large item collection. What does it cost to do a large, large item collection? How much can we save?
It's on the TV, Chuck.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there saving, are there savings if, uh, currently we collect recycling every week? So what are the savings if we went from every week collection for recycling to bi-monthly collection? So we are looking, we are looking at ways to keep expenses in check. And we are providing alternatives if council doesn't have the appetite. It's, the operation itself is not sustainable without, without minimum increases. It should be fully funded. It should be self-sustained. Um, we shouldn't be making equipment purchases for an enterprise fund out of the general fund capital accounts. But there are some options there if council would like to say, well, what services could we cut? How much could we save if we did this differently? But we are looking, always looking at ways to reduce expenses.
Thanks Chuck, I, I didn't mean to.
I don't know if it would affect, uh, how it affects the bottom line or what council's decision is, but I do like bi-weekly, um, uh, recycling, uh, or something like that. Or, you know, God's, if, you know, they're saying that we're going to buy everybody bins, you know, so if we buy everybody these, we're not going to do it anymore.
No, I think when we, we looked into that and there was conversations about whether we're going to go to mechanical collection. Um, just the cost alone of buying bins for the 36,000 residents who participate in the City of Erie, um, collection program was well over $6 million. And that's an upfront cost. And grant money was not available for that purchase. And then there's also the additional cost of, um, upfitting the trucks to be able to do that type of collection. But we are, we are going to purchase some bins with some DEP 902 grant money. And we're going to, we're going to pass those out at collection events, so.
Yeah, I think those are the ones I'm talking about.
Yeah, so if you come to tire electronics recycling.
Dumping.
Hopefully we'll have some available.
Yeah, and so most people are not going to fill those up weekly. And so that would be my, my thought that they probably could be done every other week for.
When I started, we did that. We did, uh, one week we did paper collection because that paper we got paid for. So we collected paper separately. Then the following week we collected the rest of the recycling. Uh, we could certainly look into it. It wouldn't be something that we can implement January 1st because we'd have to have time to get that message out. Um, definitely something we can look into in the future, possibly in 20, um, 24 as a way to s- save some money. Uh, we could definitely put together a spreadsheet to share with council.
And might that be something that our new environmental advisory council, which is not on the agenda for tomorrow, but should be, I believe, in two weeks after everybody has had a chance to read that ordinance? That might be something that, that they would be able to test the pulse and make sure that, that, you know, we have the education ready to go out there. We will have a council, I believe, to help us with those educational efforts. Um, it's, it's like reframing your, your thinking too, to make sure you know, you would change, if you would change it, make sure people would know what the, what the deal is.
Right, the biggest thing is communicating to the public if there's a change in collection process. Because, you know, not everybody reads the paper, not everybody has access to the internet. Everyone gets their, their information from different social media platforms. So the, the biggest component is to make sure that we have four or five or six months' time to roll this out properly.
I think we have that information up for you, Lisa, then, right, done?
Yeah, so this is the comparison of, uh, refuse rates in all the other municipalities close by. The, uh, one change that we would make to this is that the Mill Creek Township is going up to 93.09 in 2023. And, uh, we didn't, we didn't print a change for you on that, but if you want to change your books.
We saved some paper, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so you can see Fairview's at 81.30, um, Northeast is at 75, um, Gerard at 81, um. Yeah, compared to our, uh, 68.09 for 2023. Um, Harbor Creek's lower, uh, Wesleyville's lower and, uh, and Lawrence Park. But, uh, all of the other ones are higher than ours. And, um, I'm, uh, I'm not sure if we're comparing apples to apples here. In some of these smaller boroughs, they have some limitations on what they're picking up. And ours is unlimited with large item pickup. So, um, I also wanted to, um, I, I think, did we send you, um, did we send you another copy of the PFM report recently?
I asked for an update as a result of COVID.
No, we're, we're not, we didn't update the PFM because of COVID. Um, and I don't know that we're going to, but we.
I want to know what the effects of COVID had on the five-year plan. And nobody seems to give me an answer.
That is detailed out in our five, i- it's already included in our five-year plan. Anything that's happened.
You knew about COVID five years?
No, I'm, I'm looking at our five-year plan go- from now going forward. And the effects of COVID are in the 2020 and the 2021 budgets that we've already looked at.
Councilman, I can tell you, um, that the Bureau of Refuge did see a significant increase in the amount of, um, materials we collected. I think our tonnage was up 30% the year that COVID, the, the year that COVID hit and everyone was working from home. So we did see a, a direct financial impact from COVID.
And fuel was up?
Fuel was up. And some of those numbers are going back down as people go to work. But there was a, a direct impact to our operation and our expenses.
And we, we lost, um, revenues due to COVID. And that's all reflected in the financials from 2020 and 2021. And, um, as, as far as bringing PFM back in to do another five-year projection, um, we already have another five-year projection here. So I'm, I'm not sure that.
It's our own five-year projection?
Yes, yes. And, um, I, I don't think that our five-year projection even back then was much different. I mean, we're all using the same principles of projecting things, so. Um, now, um, speaking of PFM, um, okay, Tori brought up the PFM report. I just pulled out a few, um, few pages from it, just to give you a quick tour through the PFM recommendations that have to do with the rate increases. So on page 37, they're, um, explaining that the city's, uh, revenues are going up at a much lower, slower rate than our expenditure categories. So I, I highlighted that. The first is that most of the city's major expenditure categories grew much more quickly than most of the city's major revenue categories. The city has a structural deficit. Um, if we skip to page 28, or 38, I'm sorry. We've, it, it discusses the fact that we've used a lot of short-term solutions or one-time, um, quick fixes to, to manage the deficit, the structural deficit. So to manage the imbalance between revenue and expenditure growth, the city's been relying on short-term moves to close the deficit. There's a table below and, uh, it's saying that absent these moves, Erie's city government would have a deficit each of the last five years, from 2014 to 2018. So, um, if you, if you want to, I'll, I will, uh, scan all these documents that I'm reading off of now and send them to you. And you can take a look at these in conjunction. I'll also send you the entire PFM report so you can look at it again. Um, some of you look, or would be looking at it again and others would be looking at it for the first time. Um, page 77. Um, the city has traditionally enacted sewer rate increases once every three to five years. Unless those sporadic rate increases are larger, then the city needs to cover its costs at the time. The approach does not work in a financial perspective. The system's expenditures rise annually and the revenue does not, which means that the fund gradually loses ground until the next sporadic rate increase. This approach also produces steeper rate increases like the ones shown below. 18.9% in 2010, 20.4 in 2014, 15.1% in 2019, which was, I believe, our last increase. And, uh, these are harder for businesses and residents to accommodate than more predictable pace of smaller increases every year. Um, this, this also exacerbated, uh, was exacerbated by the eight, eight-plus percent inflation because we haven't raised our rates since 2019. It's also affected, yeah, after I get through this, I want to talk to you about the bond rating. It, it has reduced our, our, bond rating was downgraded because of all our reluctance to raise rates.
Three raises were the year after reelections.
Yeah. Okay, instead, the city should make smaller, regular increases in the sewer rates every year and set a schedule for those increases over the next five years so the system's users can plan for them. Um, down a little bit lower, we, we were talking about the cash transfers from the, um, these, the sewer fund and the refuse fund. Yeah, well, it's, this says, uh, on set, page 77, again, lower down. It's not unusual for a municipality to rely on these types of transfers from the sewer system to the general fund, but the transfer should ideally be calculated using a methodology that's transparent and consistently applied from year to year. The methodology could be as simple as starting with the base amount and explaining under which circumstances the amount would grow. And we have been cutting that back over the last couple of years. We're trying to phase it out. Now, Paige, can I just, if you want me to finish it, then I'll, uh, I'll check. I only have two more pages. All right, uh, page 79. This is about the refuse fund. During the 2019 budget process, city fin- city finance projected that the refuse recycling fund deficits would continue absent rate increases. The table below shows the city's five-year projection with rate increases averaging 4.9% per year to cover the expenditures, including a $1 million transfer to the general fund. The rate increase for 2020 is a 13.6% because the fund has projected a $0.5 million deficit in 2019, covered by the use of prior reserves. Um, absent, down below the, uh, the chart, absent rate increases, the revenue collected from the refuse charges is projected to remain relatively flat due to the declining population trends. And on the expenditure side, personal, personnel cost growth, driven by salaries, benefits and pension, and the projected growth in the operating costs such as tipping fees result in refuse recycling fund spending growing by 2.7% annually from, uh, 8.4 million in 2019 to 9.6 million in '24. So that's why they were, uh, suggesting that we do minimal rate increases every year to keep up with that. Um, unless the city increases its refuse charges every year, this is on page 80, the refuse recycling fund will run annual deficits for the next five years. The city has not increased the refuse collection fees since 2014 when they rose by 14.6% from 192 to 220. This equates to a 2.3% annual increase from 2013 to 2019. So they have similar, um, comments to make about the sewer increases and the property tax increases. They, they have similar observations. Um, I'll make sure that I get that to everybody.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, their findings. Uh, so I had two questions. So I guess one of the problems is that, you know, okay, if we did 3% every year, it, it's still going to be compounded. So if you're saying whatever is done in 2022, it's still going to be compounded and be a much higher rate in 2025. If you go 2, 2, 2, 2, it's gonna be, it's still gonna be like 12 instead of, you, you, you know what I mean? And, 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 and so, so the, the question really was that I think, you know, in the 1920, that we understood it, we just, you know, uh, we understood it, we just, uh, the, the premise, I think. So now that we have gone four years without one or three years without one, I think the premise, you know, from the city's perspective, that we should reset back at 11 and that to repay for the years that it wasn't, you know, raised. That's the way I interpret it.
That's, that's not how we calculated the number, but, but I understand what you're saying.
Right, and so I, I think that, you know, uh, ever, and so some of these are fixed costs, but everyone has, has had to, you know, had, has had to tighten their belt. And, uh, and even if we go, you know, uh, $2 a year, at the end it's 12, you know, 12, it's, it's, it's still a, a possible burden to some of the taxpayers, even if it goes slower or whether it's, it's still the same amount.
Consider though that the cost increases for our expenditure items is compounding as well in the same manner.
I think you, you gave us some examples of things that, because if, if these fees would not be increased, we would have to fill a hole, correct? Two different holes with what those revenues are projected to be from those increases. So we had some examples of what we would or could give up, you know, large item pickup, electronic recycling. What could possibly be done on the sewer side to, if we don't have, I mean, we can't like not have chlorine for the water.
INI, that was the, the, the only thing that, but that was major upfront investment.
Right, but I mean, we don't have like, uh, like.
Another option.
Right, another option to say, well, you can't flush your toilet like every night.
If you, if you look at the wastewater treatment budget, most of those costs, all those costs actually are out, out of our control.
Do we, do we have a little bit of reduction costs with the new incinerator? Cause we'll be doing a little less tipping on that or is that?
We should have some considerable reduction in gas usage once those incinerators are online and that project is still currently underway.
And that seems like a nice segue into the bond thing that you wanted to mention, Lisa, or.
Before the segue, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Just, uh, I sound like a broken record, but you guys are doing a great job. My problem is that we're always trying to balance, bring more money in on the shoulders of the poor people who built this town. People want a fixed income, living on 17th and Poplar or 23rd and Wallace. If I don't take my heart into saying I'll be able to pay those fees, but there's a whole hell of a lot of people out there who can't. but there's a whole hell of a lot of people out there who can't.
Right.
And that's, that's why I will continue. I'll find two million in that budget, not in yours.
This morning, we spent, we spent a considerable amount of time with the budgets that we spoke about, the forty thirty-three, the forty fifty-seven. We we went line by line with Basil Ronzetti and we were looking at places that there's really no discretionary spending in 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 operating a treatment plant. And it is what it is, it's unfortunate.
Well, you explain it, I saw the number and I just didn't know what it was.
And they did that because I was giving them a hard time this morning about it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. And that's why we weren't down here till five twenty-nine.
We were on time, though.
Okay, the sewer authority, Tori, the bond summary.
Our sewer thirty bond was downgraded from A-stable to B, triple B plus stable. And the main re, the main reason for that, they mentioned it three or four different times in this document that it's because, it has a lot to do with our hesitance to raise rates. We have to keep our debt service coverage at one point one percent or one hundred and ten percent. And several different times, like on on page two, ESA has a, Erie Sewer Authority has a history of financial operations right around one point one DSC, which stands for debt service coverage, which does not provide much cushion should annual costs increase. Rates are very affordable as the authority reports an average quarterly residential bill of about eighty-five. The next page, page three, I highlighted a section. Rates averaging eighty-five dollars per quarter, which we consider affordable and benchmarked against Erie City's MHH EBI, which is sixty-two percent of the national average and Erie County sixteen percent poverty rate. It goes on to say operational management practice and policies that we've generally considered good for comparable utilities and include adequate system capacity to treat existing flows, the existence of electronic mapping for system components and regular customer outreach regarding service interruptions, and a potential rate increase if applicable, although the system is described in aversion to increasing rates. This is their analysis of our sewer operations. Down a little bit lower, it says the stable outlook reflects S and P Global Ratings' opinion that the city sewer funds adequate financial profile over the two-year outlook period, evidenced by thin all-in DSC and liquidity that S and P Global Ratings expects to be sustained based on the city's government, or city's agreement to raise rates and fees accordingly. So the lease rental payments will remain adequate. So that's indicating that we agreed to raise rates regularly. Then on page four, it gives you the upside and the downside outlook. As stated above, the rating or outlook could be negatively pressured if DSC consistently fell below the one point one benchmark or if ESA's unrestricted liquidity position dropped to levels significantly below levels achieved in recent audited financial years due to a lack of rate increases. So I think four different times, they reference the fact that we don't do regular rate increases and this had an impact on our bond rating, which makes it more expensive to borrow money to do major projects. So it it really does have a big impact on our budget and our future. Any questions? I mean, I'll get all this out to you, I'll email it to everybody.
I just want to, you know, advocate for the fact that any additional increases, depending on if you're a renter or homeowner, if you're a renter, the increases do offset to the tenant eventually. And these increases, from what I can understand, have been pushed off and then put on and then pushed off and then put on. And we're trying to play catch-up for a deficit that we all know is pending. So for me, it's just making sure that we're aware that our state as a whole has a very low minimum wage. We have a lot of disabled elderly citizens who are on fixed incomes, who pretty much get to a point where they lose their homes when they can't afford to upkeep on the increases. So I just want us to be conscientious of our homeownership stock that we have in the community. As somebody who's seen rent prices jump from anywhere from five hundred to six hundred for a two-to-three bedroom to now be twelve hundred to thirteen, you know, someone's making the money and it ends up being the landlord who is making the money, not necessarily the municipality who is servicing certain public entities. So for me, it's just, let's be conscientious that at a point, citizens can't afford more. And we have a lot of things that we want to add to our budget and it's just, it's sad when I work with elderly and disabled and I see they get one check a month and once it's gone, it's gone. So just be conscientious.
And and I think we all do sympathize with that. And obviously, over the last four years, we've been cognizant of that because we haven't increased any of these rates. But at some point, we have to cover our costs and and a year, an inflationary year like we've had.
Help me understand then, last year, when I said no fee increases, the mayor said, okay, we'll take that million seven out of lease water money. So that was the increase. We didn't increase it to the people, but we increased the money. So you can't say that we didn't have the increase, is what I'm trying to say.
Now, I don't know, yeah, I do follow you. And I'd like you to look at the five-year projection for the general fund. Tori, page eighty-nine in the budget handbook. We've got six point two million left in that water lease fund.
Seventeen that he played with, though.
Pardon me?
Seventeen you played with.
We used it as, we used it exactly as was outlined, with the exception of the the one point two that we took out last year for for the sewer increase and the refuse increase. Other than that, we used it.
Did you answer my question then, by taking that money out? We actually did have an increase as far as the budget was concerned.
As far as last year's budget, yes. Yeah, we don't have that in this year's budget, though. It doesn't compound. We would have to take it again this year. If we do that, we we run out of funds faster. We we had in two thousand twenty done that sewer lease, was it tw- two thousand twenty, Mayor? The sewer lease deal, the sewer lease prepayment arrangement? Oh, I'm sorry, the water lease prepayment arrangement. Now, we we started out and I gave you a spreadsheet with every expenditure from that seventeen million. And it all went to appropriate fund balance so that we didn't have to increase our taxes in years twenty, I think nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Now, we've got six point two million left. And we're using, according to this five-year projection, we're using three point two of that this year and the remaining three million next year. And we're going to come up short by two point two million next year of balancing our budget. So we, if we take that money again to avoid rate increases, we're going to take two, this two million out of this three million here.
We'll get it from someplace else then.
And we're going to need four point two million to balance our budget next year.
I I was kind of going off of gut instinct on some of the numbers. So I went and I spent way too much time in her office this week, I'm sorry about it. And so I was going through where we get our sewer revenue from versus where we get our property tax revenue from. Because if we need to take a million dollars from somewhere, the rate that it comes for your lady on Seventeenth and Poplar, if it's property taxes, seventy-one percent of that money is coming from our residents. A little over seventy-one, it's like seventy-one point four nine, I can't remember the, I should have brought my little spreadsheet with me. And on sewer, because, you know, Gannon and the nonprofits are paying into sewer fee, residents were only paying, it was about sixty-four percent of that money. So every time that that the money's coming from the sewer fund, it's actually working out to the benefit. Now, I'm really happy that we don't have any refuse transfer because that was actually the opposite effect. All of that money is coming from residents. I would rather see property taxes go up as much as, don't, are they recording this? They're going to splice that down and get me just saying, I want property taxes to go up. I'd rather see property taxes go up than than the sewer be fifth fee. If we wanted to throw together a budget where we were transferring two million out of sewer into the general fund and two million of that into the refuse fund, it would be benefiting residents. I mean, you could get a little creative with it. But the sewer transfer to do that on the, on next year's property tax bill is is really what we're looking at, is that we're looking at deferred payment with that transfer at a higher rate than what residents are already paying.
City Council approved that resolution for the water lease prepayment agreement in August of two thousand twenty, just for those who wondered about that.
And that was another, that was a really large one-time infusion. I mean, after what PFM said about pulling one-time, you know.
Yeah, I mean, between that as a one-time revenue source and and ARPA money, we're looking still at a five point eight million dollar deficit, structural deficit that we're funding with one-time revenue sources.
Right, that's not sustainable.
And that's that's much more my concern than the fees necessarily. So so I'm still in favor of finding some cuts, Ed.
If we decrease the rate increase or get rid of it, what services will suffer? That's what I look at.
I did provide an example of if your, if city council does not have the appetite for the two percent increase in the refuse fund, then I did provide some examples of some of the services that we could cut to offset the the fee increase. We could eliminate the large item collection program. We can take a look at whether or not, and we want to continue to offer free compost because that comes at an expense for the enterprise fund.
How much are we making on the compost since we guys agreed it?
The only, the one year we made several thousand dollars, this year we didn't make anything. It was.
Mostly nicer, I've been using.
It's very nice, we we send it to Penn State for sample. It's the highest rated compost you can make. It's just having the time and to put together the business model and how and how do we do it? And we talked about additional revenue. If for people who haven't been down the compost site, we spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of money to get it to where it is now, where we're creating a world-class product. And we might be at the point where, is there an opportunity to generate additional revenue? Milk Creek, Fairview, and Gerard, I think they all share a compost center. And what they do is they charge landscapers or residents a fee to get a sticker to utilize that facility. And then when they bring in materials from their landscaping business, they they pay additionally. So is that something we could look at to generate additional revenue for the fund? Absolutely, we have the space, we have the right equipment, we have the, we have the right personnel. But it's, it is an opportunity there to generate some additional revenue because the site is at a point now where we can accept it. I wouldn't say, let's do it for ten years. I'd say, let's do it for one or two-year pilot and see how it goes. Because I don't know how much material we're going to accept. So a pilot program would be a perfect idea to see what we can generate. And maybe that's something that we can bring to the table for this spring or this summer. I mean, in the next couple of months and and see how that goes.
I mean, I like the idea with us starting to be more environmentally conscious. Maybe once people know that that's an option, we might actually be able to bring in revenue to sustain whatever it is that we're trying to at that point. So I'm in favor of it. So any information, just let me know, want to know more.
Thank you. Currently, it's not an option. The only material that we accept, materials from our compost program. And we we accept some materials from some of, maybe Gannon University, Hammett, some of the local companies, but we don't charge at this point.
Chuck could get in, partner with us to do a small business plan for that composting thing rather than to have us.
I I think that we can find some resources necessary to see what, you know, what it would look like. And of course, we'd need, we'd need an ordinance passed by council and, you know, for the, for the fee structure in the sticker. We'd need legal opinion if that's something we could do. But I see other communities around us doing it and generating revenue. So that that is a possibility.
Thank you.
If we eliminate large item pickup, though, we could create a problem around people dumping stuff everywhere. And then, I mean, if they want the couch mover from their house, now they're going to pay me to come with my truck, a hundred dollars.
Charge them ten bucks, give them a tag.
You know what I mean, so you're going to create a problem.
And I think that a lot of the illegal dumping that that you find around the city of Erie are generated just by that because you see the, you see the signs, call me for fifty bucks, I'll haul away all your stuff. And they go to your house, load up their truck and drive around the corner and dump in the back alley. And the city pays for it. I think, I think the large item collection program has been a tremendous success. But if that's something that we have to sacrifice, we have to, we have to make sure that our operations are sustainable for the long run. And we have to be recognized that. So if if there's not a fee increase this year or next year, what do we do to make sure that we can maintain and provide our our basic service, our refuse collection, our recycling collection, our compost? We're mandated by the state since we're a third-class city to run that compost operation. That'd be the first thing I'd say, get rid of, get rid of compost. Milk Creek Township, they're a second-class city, they throw their grass in the landfill and they and they pay for it, they pay whatever they pay their tipping fees. We're open to, we're open to suggestions and we're open to look at, look at additional ways to to try to generate revenue and cut expenses.
So I know one thing I mentioned before was like, you know, like where there's charging for like home clean-out fees. Because obviously, there's people out there, landlords, who are throwing everything in the kitchen sink out on the curb. And it's an obvious clean-out or or, you know, eviction or whatever it might be that we charge a fee for a, you know, a larger-than-normal, you know, amount of pickup and assess a fee to it. And maybe, I don't know, the tipping fees going up, whether we'll still win or not, but that's one ideal that would drive more revenue. And it's, because those people are getting off scot-free because eventually you have to go pick it up anyway. And so if we could, you know, go, hey, obviously, this is a clean-out. We got more than usual, we got building, whatever we have here, that, okay, that's a hundred fifty-dollar pickup, that's not a six-dollar pickup. And able to create a system to, you know, to bill these people who are taking advantage of, you know, of the goodwill of the city.
And we did have that conversation with previous planning director Kathy Rosneck. One of the ways we can address blight and illegal dumping, how do we, what, how do we, when we go to a house and we see someone who's in violation, you know, obviously, a thirty-dollar quality life ticket isn't going to be the, be a motivating factor when someone empties their entire property out. But was there a mechanism in place and could the city absorb that in their current operation to go out and absorb that, pick that material up? And how do you, how do you place an appropriate lien on the property? Because obviously, the property would have to be leamed. You wouldn't, you wouldn't get your money right away, but eventually you would get your, you would probably get your money. Now, would you do that by the, by the ton of material you you collected? How do you, how do you, how do you structure the, structure the lien or the fees?
So a lot of times, it's landlords, it's not homeowners. And so bill the current owner.
Well, that might require us, I, something I think I kind of alluded to at a previous budget session is you all had access to the report on delinquencies in terms of refuse. So do we want to, I mean, that's a public.
So do we want to, I mean, that's a public record. Do we want to put that out there again? Because there are some, you could tell that there were some land, there are property owners that had a lot of delinquencies. And what was the amount, Lisa, of that? What'd you say, Chuck?
Sorry, one and a half million.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Didn't you say Lisa, and I started muttering.
Okay. Anyhow.
I did update the council book, delinquency report. Tori's looking for it right now.
I didn't know it sent to the end, but up to date.
Yeah.
For the refuse.
Right.
I think it's the, it's in the, it's in the main folder.
Now, I've said for years that now that we have computers, that one of the big things we should do is move the sheriff's sale to two-years delinquency instead of three.
Yeah.
And we would not have a budget problem at all. I guarantee you.
Ed, Ed Betts, I did ask him about that. He followed up with, you know, it's, it's, I think it's Knox that has the contract, I believe, for the, for the county for that. And it, there's a, it's a lot more complicated than just moving it up, because they're doing a lot of due diligence. Ed will be here at tomorrow's council meeting, but he'll be here a little bit late. We do have a finance, we continue the budget discussion tomorrow after the regular business of council, so Ed Betts should be there, so he can do the big explanation to all of council that I asked him about last week when I met.
Thank you.
Because, because I knew you had asked about that. And those names were published in the August twenty-sixth, I think, edition of the Erie Times News. And I believe that you can go back and look at Legal Ads. I think you can look at that for, for free, I'm not sure, but on the e-edition. The county has a pretty good website explaining when, when the list is to appear on the properties that are delinquent on property taxes. And then it states what date it was going to be in the newspaper. So I went back and looked at that, too. That was several pages long. But I can show it to you tomorrow, Ed, if you want, because of my subscription, if you want to look at it.
Just looking for ways to save money.
I know, I know you are. I, I appreciate that. What else tonight do we want to tackle? Are we getting to the point of seven fifteen? And we do have more time tomorrow. What's your preference?
I just wanted to put out a statement for council. You guys are off the hook on this one. But if your department is adding personnel in the upcoming year, you should have an explanation of how they're being paid. Like, you know, there's two people being hired with the, the stormwater fee, and they're going to be paid by the stormwater fee. And I know other departments are having anticipated expansions. And so note to everyone, if you have an expansion, bring in how you specifically plan on paying for this personnel, other than offsetting it with just the general fund.
When are you going to find that out, Mike? After we pass the budget?
No, the budget's not, it's not passed.
About three, it's coming in on Thursday.
And they'll have explanations for everything.
It's not until the twenty-first, so.
That's what you.
What's that?
There's no additions, there's no additional employees in the budget that we have now. And that's the budget for next year. The one group that's added is the police force. They want to add nine additional officers, but that's all paid from ARP funding, and we're using for that. And we will not keep those employees on if we can't build up the funding to pay them for our normal revenue. Which is, the way I'm trying to raise revenue is increase the number of people that live in Erie and work in Erie. And I think we're having some success with that. It's not going to happen tomorrow, you know, but in the next couple of years, I'm hoping to add several thousand people. The next seven years, my goal is to add ten thousand people to Erie's population. So that would make a significant, significantly additional income to us. One of the places it's happening is right downtown here. Of those thirty-some apartments they just opened, EPC, most of them are new residents in Erie. And they've got another thirty-five coming in the new building, Fifth and State they're working on. And most of that, we do. They have a hundred people waiting, a hundred families waiting to come to Erie, because they want to be in downtown here.
Do we know the skill levels when these people come in? Educational levels?
To be honest, a lot of them are retired people. They want to come back to Erie now. And they're born and raised here.
I do, would everybody, I mean, we're meeting tomorrow, we'll be back here before you know it. But remember for Thursday night's meeting, that David Forrest did send us a bunch of spreadsheets and everything. And I think, Lisa, in our workbook, doesn't it have something about FTEs by? Yeah, in the council book? I believe it's page two. Yeah, it's page two. So everybody, you could bring your, bring your budget handout book for tomorrow, too, But I think Michael's point, it's always good to have that information about where bodies are. So. Yeah, anybody that's. Where the bodies are buried. Anybody that's got that will, will be coming with an explanation, not an exclamation. I've tried to say exclamation, but, yeah.
You did good.
All right. Is there anything else for tonight? One last thing, when we have our council meeting tomorrow, Lori has told me we do not adjourn at the end, you know, the normal, like, the gavel, because we're going to go right into the budget finance meeting tomorrow, okay? And I know, Mo, you have, you have to get to work and stuff, so we'll see how things go. I have, you know, we had a bunch of ordinances that we got for consideration. So I put together a list with Lori's help and Ed Betts's help, but I want them to look at the list I put together about when we can act on each one that is, has been proposed, including your favorite. Yeah, okay. So as soon as I make sure I have that correct, I'll make sure council has that, too, so we can look forward to the end of two thousand twenty-two.
Well, I just, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to come down, make this presentation. And as always, if there's any additional questions, AJ and I are always available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.